I'll head and call this Norwood City Council meeting to order. If everyone can please rise for the moment of reflection and a pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Here.
Mrs. Hoover?
Here.
Ms. Royce?
Here.
Mrs. Bowling?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Gertner?
Here.
Mr. Brayden?
Here.
We have all members present this evening. I don't want anyone to be excited about the short agenda because we have, oh, about eight amendments. So, the first item is to add a presentation by the Board of Health, and that will actually be the first of the special presentations, and that is regarding accreditation. We have five reports of standing committees to add. The first will be Committee of the Whole from November 11th. Second will be Law and Ordinance from October 20th. Third will be Law and Ordinance from November 10th. Fourth will be Finance, October 28th. And the fifth will be Infrastructure from November the 19th. Under introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions, we will be adding two items. The first is a resolution regarding backyard paving, and the second is an ordinance regarding virtual currency kiosks. And I believe those are all of the amendments. Mrs. Bowling?
I move that we amend the agenda as stated.
Is there a second? Mr. Gertner?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Gertner, the motion is to amend the agenda as stated. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, these are minutes of the October 28th regular council meeting. Ms. Royce?
I move we accept the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as if read?
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right. Mr. Gertner?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gertner. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to special presentations, the first one this evening, we have members of the Norwood Board of Health, if you would like to come up to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name's Pam Mullen, and I'm the Health Commissioner for the Norwood City Board of Health. Over here to my left is my senior data analyst and accreditation coordinator, Shereen Alshar. So I just wanted to come here tonight. Victor suggested that I come and share our good news with you all. Ever since I was hired in March of '22, I was given the charge of accreditation for our health department. Accreditation is a nationally certification that focuses on quality improvement and innovation, and we worked very hard the last three and a half years to upload 77 measures to the accreditation board back in March. Four of those measures were returned, and we returned those in a week. That was considered phenomenal by the accrediters. Then we had our site visit on September 30th. We were only given one day. Most health departments get two, so they gave us only one. And when they were finished with that very short day, that was only like from 9:00 to 1:30 or 2:00 o'clock, I was told, and Shereen and all of us, our whole team was sitting there, and they said they wished every health department that they visited was just like ours. So I am very pleased to present to you all with the accreditation from the National Accreditors Board. That will last for five years. Every year, we will submit an annual report, and in five years, we will get reaccreditation. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Our next item under special presentation is Mike Skelly, the Community Development Director.
Good evening, council, members of the audience. Noah Powers and myself are here tonight to provide a presentation. It's actually twofold. It involves the redevelopment of the Allison Elementary School site. And equally important with regards to that development is the anticipated improvements for that neighborhood. So what I'd like to do is to take you through a presentation of that, which lasts about fifteen minutes, and give you a lot of questions. So, related with this presentation, just like the overall theme, is I'll be providing a bit of the background and the history for the area, and then it's a progression of what we anticipate, both for the revisioning, the revitalization of the area, the reinvestment, which is going to be a big thing, and then ultimately, the reinvention of this neighborhood. So for those that are not familiar with the neighborhood, just to get your bearings, in the foreground, we have closer to Montgomery Road. To the right side, you'll have Cortland. To the background, you'll have Allison Street. And to the left, you'll have Ware, which I learned as part of this presentation was, I believe, the first mayor for the city. In the center, you have the former Harmon Memorial Church, and I guess it's now the Grace and Truth Church operational. And as you can see, there's a vacant space which used to be part of the school. So starting off with the history, as you can see on the left, the school closed around 2008. The image you see is around 2009. And then a few years later, you'll see what the site looks like now. To the left, you can see that the building has been demolished, and we'll talk a bit about the funding that went into that a bit. This is a better picture of that, what it looks like, you know, this year. So, dealing with the history of this area and trying to learn why it's important, so we have a neighborhood that has a pretty decent split of both single-family and multifamily. You can see the percentages there. And also what's telling, the demographic profile. It's mostly, I wouldn't say seniors, but it's an older population, and it's a very stable community. So whether it's stable because of the certain attributes with that, with regards to, there's about three churches, it's about 500 feet to the commercial area, and it's essentially a decent area in terms of what I would like to think primed for redevelopment, not just, at least, just the school district. So, the big thing with the area, aside from its outreach, we also are looking at an area that has difficulty in terms of its road, and more importantly, the water line that surrounds that area. The homes are essentially from 1900, and ironically, based on that year, the water system is probably a few years older. So the water system for this neighborhood actually predates the city. Typically, for these lines, the life cycle for such things is usually 50 to 70 years. So we're looking at 120 years for those infrastructure, and it's woefully inadequate, what would typically be the standards that we're looking at right now.
Yeah, so one of the major issues for being able to redevelop this site, particularly the historic school building, is that the water pressure is not high enough to sprinkle the building, doesn't meet the current fire codes. So you cannot change the use of that from a school to a residential structure without the city upgrading that main from a four-inch water main to an eight-inch water main. Now, one of the great things is, when you do that, it doesn't just go to that property, it goes to everyone in that neighborhood. So it goes way back into that neighborhood. It'll increase the fire flow, the water pressure for residents throughout. And as sort of a, aside with that, that road is not necessarily in a condition where you can go out, cut a trench down it, redo the water line, and then just pave that trench back over. You have to redo this street. The base is showing. So in order to get this project done, there's a lot of really significant public infrastructure that has to be improved on that block and into that neighborhood.
As you see with the slide, we had the city engineers estimate the improvements, and it was, again, this is several months ago, I suspect it's probably escalated since then. It's 1.42 million that was provided. One thing Noah was remiss mentioning, he was able to secure $710,000 through Sorda to help fund this, which was a huge amount in terms of it's going towards its development. So I think we owe him an appreciation in terms of securing that through, at least ironically, it was the Transportation Authority, but they provide infrastructure improvements. So here's a bit more of a detail in terms of what we were talking about for the improvements that are necessary, both the road, the sidewalks, and then what you can't see is underneath. I took a calculation, and I'm estimating there's going to be probably at least 50 benefiting properties for this neighborhood that surround the area. Of that, because there's multifamily, I would probably estimate doubling that in terms of probably 100 households, and then looking at three churches for that neighborhood. So when we talk about revisioning, it's kind of a very basic exercise, whether it's being done by the city. In this case, we're talking about more of a public-private partnership for it, some of the background. So we have an active and eager developer looking at what can be done for this 2.1-acre site. The best use, at least when they were going through different models and what could be done, will have a development. And on the south side, you'll see the existing school. Those will be converted to about 23 condominiums, one- and two-bedroom. I don't have an estimate of what the profile, what the sizes are, but I think the developer's looking for a more upscale type of condominium format. And then surrounding that site, you have 17 townhouses. And these are quite large for the area. They'll be 2,000 square foot plus. And then on the northwest corner, the developer actually bought two lots. They went to the BZA, and they were divided into four future single-family homes. So what you can see from these two slides, and this was provided by the Venture Group, again, it's good architecture. You can see the existing school. You have a pitched roof. You have dormers. You have brick. And for the townhouses, the developer and the architect wanted to pick up that feel as well. So to me, it picks up, in some cases, what the surrounding character is. It probably adds to it, and more importantly, it's respectful of the existing historic school. So again, returning to the financing, the money for this, what's going to make it work? So the developer has kicked in minimally about 1.8 million for the acquisition, demolition, cleanup of the site, and so period. All that was important to initially get things done, but it's a far cry from what's still necessary. The work to the condominiums to be done, the townhouses, that's going to at least be another 14 or so million dollars. The investment itself, again, it's something when we look at, if we were a township and we're looking at a greenfield development, it's a different equation for the developer to look at. Granted, this site is not a brown field. We're not looking at major environmental cleanup. Nevertheless, it does require a lot more care and caution in terms of going through. There will likely be some asbestos. There will likely be some issues in terms of improving the stormwater. And as we mentioned before, the big thing, I don't think the developer would move on to this type of project if the surrounding area was as it's right now. So that was always brought to the forefront for what the developer wanted us to look at, and it took a good year to kind of go through the numbers, work with the engineers, and figure out how could we partner with this development. So, as we've discussed in previous meetings sometimes, generous carrot that we have, and again, especially for Norwood, is using tax abatement. And there's two primary types. We have CRA, and we have TIFs. And what we're hoping, and as we mentioned before, this benefit will have anchor both for the neighborhood and hopefully spur on further development. And especially since, again, harkening back to the improved roads, the water system, it might encourage other lots to either combine or redevelop those. But I'd just like to walk you through, we talk a lot about it, but I think sometimes people are about fuzzy about the math. So in this case, taking people step by step through, and what's the benefit, both to the city, the community, and to the developer. So right now, the two properties that make up Allison School, they're contributing around $10,000 in gross taxes. If you figure the minimal improvements to the building, that's going to be about $13 million. And essentially, C is that kind of key point with regards to the math. You punch in the 13 million, the developer is looking at having an abatement of around 80%, multiplied by the factor which is used for looking at the millage, but pre-millage, and then multiplied by the actual millage, you're looking at a quarter of a million dollars per year of what would be potentially the foregone taxes and what the abatement would actually be. Typically, for that type of development, it could be 10, it could be 12. Typically, it'll be 15 years. So that in itself, we're looking at $3.74 million, just for the CRA. Again, the key question is, looking at everything that needs to be done, is that going to be sufficient? So with regards to this project, and nothing innovative we've done for other projects, we typically also have a TIF with regards to that. So this replicates the same math, but we're looking at at least for the residual 20% for the remainder of the period, which will be from 16 to 30 years, another $330,000. So you can kind of go through, and this is just summing up. So in the end, we're looking at at least a project, let's say approaching 15 million, and with the abatements and improvements that we put for the surrounding neighborhood, just under 5 million. So the hope is that the developer will probably start looking at the plans, having them submitted to the city, probably in the next three to six months. The site is zoned R3 multifamily. It has a PUD. It's always the developer's option to decide whether to use it or not. My feeling is that they could probably provide a relatively clean development without going through the PUD. I know there's been concern before with council. It may just require a few variances, but ultimately, I think the developer will figure out what's the best route and what's the most expedient to proceed with this.
I want to go back just a little bit here and take a look at why the CRA and TIF example is using a CRA of 80%. So part of what we've been talking about with the Venture Group is using an 80% CRA rather than the 100% that's allowed under the ordinance. So what that does is that generates a payment in lieu of taxes. You hear that called a pilot tax or a pilot fee. So that pilot payment would go into the TIF, and that would allow us to go out to float a bond, a bond, to do funding for the additional infrastructure. So that would allow this development to essentially pay for a huge portion of that infrastructure upgrade that needs to happen in that neighborhood, funding that wouldn't have to come out of the city's coffers. Now I'll move us back to the question and answer.
I'm sorry, what was the, like, amount annually estimated that would kick in? I just wasn't sure which of those.
For the CRA?
The 20% that would go into the TIF.
So over the life of it, it would be about $1.3 million. And so that would be that 15 years. That's essentially what that would allow us to put a bond out for. So that would fund about 90% of that with the funding that we're expecting to come in from Sorda, the whole thing should be able to be paid for.
Mrs. Franzen?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. So for this infrastructure improvement, obviously, the water main, that would include repaving the road and redoing the sidewalk, and that would be on Ware Avenue?
Correct.
Okay. And only Ware, not the other surrounding streets? Is that the relevant one?
The way, that would be the primary place. So if there's additional funding that's available through this TIF, it could be used in other places in the neighborhood. From a fire flow and from a water flow perspective, the ideal scenario would be to form what you would call a loop that would go down Ware and then back down Allison. And so that would give flow into that neighborhood from two different directions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Snyder?
Can you clarify what portion of Ware, because Ware runs about five blocks, and I think you're only talking about one block.
Yeah, this is the block between Montgomery and Allison.
Mrs. Hoover?
Sorry, thank you. What will be the other benefits to folks in the area? You and I had a brief conversation about that the other day. In terms of water flow?
So it is going to increase the fire pressure. So when we have a fire emergency, say you have a structural fire in that area, when they hook up to a hydrant, it is going to put more water on that fire faster. It's also going to make sure that the system circulates better.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Franzen?
And for this development, I believe, I recall, at least initially, that they were going to have these townhomes and the single-family homes for sale as opposed to renting them? Is that still correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Snyder?
I think as you talk about the fire suppression system, the fire suppression system would be placed in the old high school building, which is the original high school building, as they convert that to condos. But then all the new townhouses would be, have a fire suppression system, sprinklers as required in them also. And that's why that's one of these, one of the incredible, one of the important parts of this. And then water flow, I looked at this and looked at the surrounding area, the water flow and the pressures could be increased all the way back, if you wanted to get a visual, you know, all the way back to like the community center area. And that's four or five blocks surrounding this area where it would hit. And then the other point I'll make just before we go is Montgomery Road, they've already, they were thinking about this and this improvement, and Clint, of course, being thinking ahead on Montgomery Road, before they repaved Montgomery Road, they made a tie-in so that they could make these improvements, if they were approved, make the improvements without tearing up all of Montgomery Road again, right there at the library. So a good point, too. Those were the only three notes that I had here.
Any other questions? Mr. Moore?
Thank you. So in total, approximately how many residents would you expect this might bring to this block?
If I would use, let's say, the approximate 100 households, and if you want to, whatever, 2.3 or whatever they're about, you get a rough idea, in addition to, like I said, it's close to the library, I think, the other in terms of having the cross connections as well. And to me, the biggest thing, like, to one point, again, I'm stressed the age of this, I'm floored that it's that old, 4 inches, because to me, having been in the water sector, so even if they would replace it with another four-inch main, it would be a significant improvement, just the fact that decades worth of sediment, the orifice is got smaller and smaller and smaller. So the fact that, again, I talked with Clint about it in terms of how we present it, et cetera, but that in itself will be a huge improvement. But the fact that we're going to a standard eight-inch, it'll be significant appreciation in terms of the block. So like I said, it's, the age of it in itself is disturbing, but the fact that even if they improve it, that would be a decent improvement itself.
Mrs. Franzen?
Obviously, with the age, there's always a question of lead. When this, if this would go through, is there funding also to replace the, any lines going to other houses that are lead, if we would replace the main? Or is that something that we'd have to seek outside funding potentially?
This would replace all the connections to all of them down the street for that block.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bowling?
I have a question and more of a comment. Little-known Sam Bowling fact, before this was Grace and Truth Church, it was Norwood Christian Academy, and I went to school there. The streets were bad then. I am 32, and that was fourth grade. So I am thrilled. Right on the street, that parking lot functioned as our playground. It was a small school, and, I mean, even then, it was such an issue. This has been such a long, a long time coming. So I'm thrilled that this has got this much attention already before it's even.
I should, when you mentioned playground, so I don't know if you noticed, and I can go back to, but essentially, when they demolished, essentially, the actual concrete, there will be almost like a mini square in the center of it. So aside from the aesthetic function of it, it will be a practical alternative. So obviously, the way it's designed is probably benefiting obviously for the residents and the community, because it's not like they're pretty catered around.
Great.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you both. Moving on to requests to address council, we have four. And the first is Haley Thurston. If you can, for all requests to address council, if you can state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Hello. Look at me. I'm like a bad penny over here. It's Haley. My address is 3911 South Jefferson Avenue, and I just had a great, great conversation with John Moore today, and also Bishop, but mainly John Moore. And he was telling me that we could improve the, there are two signs that say blind pedestrian in the area. I did put them up, but I'm, if we could approve, if we could improve the lighting there, maybe put another street light there, or even maybe put like reflective tape on those signs, but it would have to be light reflective tape and not really dark reflective tape. So it would, it would definitely have to be something like that. If we could do that, that would be great for my transportational needs and things like that. John, if you would like to speak on that or something? No?
Mr. Moore?
Sure. And I think this is probably a Mr. Powers thing as much as anybody, but outside Ms. Thurston's home, immediately to the right of her driveway, there's a pole with a blind person in area sign as you go sort of northbound on South Jefferson. And then if you were to come out of her home and go left, there's a pole sort of on the far side of the property to her left as you come south. That one seems to be streetlit. I didn't have a chance to go by it today, but I think in either case, the sort of use case here is that Ms. Thurston relies on Uber's lifts, Metro Access, et cetera, for transportation. And I think the issue is that people don't have a great time finding her there, and so if there's just any solar light, reflective tape, something that could be added onto those signs to help. those signs to help better signify like where to get her, certainly the GPS technology gets people, you know, close enough. But I think in some cases, maybe they don't have as easy of a time finding her with that. So that was just what we had discussed.
Yes.
Small, you know, small kind of intervention that might improve visibility on those two signs coming or going north or southbound on South Jefferson at the 3900 block.
That's all I had to say.
All right, thank you.
The next request to address council is Nehemiah Collins.
Hello, my name is Nehemiah Collins, my address is 1821 Clearing Avenue. Say the last time I was here, I was wearing a mask, like a hat, because I was like dealing with some gang violence when I was incumbent, and it was just, it was like a tragedy because I was just hanging around guns and people that wanted me to potentially even kill or rob, which I ain't had no choice but. And I wasn't happy with what I did, but I also like came, came up, like through struggles in life too. And dealing with that, I ain't really know how to deal with it other than avoiding everybody and like running away. But now, like, I'm just, I'm just really trying to stay focused on my future and what I really want to do in life. And me being with Bishop and Brother Kenny is really helping me out because I can find, I can find out new things in life and really see what's out there that I want for my future. Like, the main thing in the household you should have is structure, order, and consistency. And like, when I was living with Bishop, that's, that's really what all I would have, like, and, and it really helped me because, like, I ain't really know how to stay consistent. I was just falling short with bad things and just not improving. But I say like now, I see myself in a way better journey, and it's really helping out. And I just really do thank Brother Kenny and Bishop, and I love them for what they done. And, um, trying to think what else. That's crazy because I'm not really up here, because like, last time I was here, I ain't really talked, only said one word. I'm, I'm grateful for that. Really crazy. But, um, I just thank God for what he done for me and my family. And me dealing with my, like, tragedy moments, because I had, like, my grandma recently just passed away in August. And I just been, I just been spiraling on that, like, I just been getting mad at everybody else and not listening to them. And it just, it just didn't help out. But that's not what my grandma would have wanted, for me. So I see that now, and I just want to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Kenny Domingo.
Good evening, my name is Kenny Domingos, my address is 4305 Ashland Avenue. And I'm the owner of Kenny's Vision, a small business focusing on graphic design based on branding. And I'm also a graduate of Xavier University, graduated with a Bachelor of Arts, focused with graphic design. Thank you. And after I graduated college, I was really scrambling throughout the summer. And for those of you who understand football references, I was scrambling and I got out the pocket and just really trying to see what I connected with. Because there's a number of things that I wanted to do, but I had God's favor on my side and I was able to meet this, you know, stern-eyed, bald-headed man who I respect very much, Bishop Sonny James, God-fearing man as well. And I was able to see who he was, and I'm now have the pleasure of saying that he's my mentor, and I've been able to learn under him for the past few months. And he has an organization called The Call to Action. And I also have been having the pleasure of being his first success ambassador, which is why you heard Nehemiah say Brother Kenny's been helping me out. So when it first came to me, I was, I was really thinking, I'm like, wow, this is a huge commitment, right? Because I mean, a lot of people don't know, it's the difference between a mentor and a success ambassador. For the success ambassador, you have to be present in their life, not only, you know, months, like sometimes mentoring, I'm not knocking mentors, but you have to be consistently present, because that's what we like to teach, consistency, structure, and order. And we like for our young men and the youth women as well, who are we, who we're working with, to see that in their life as well through us. And so I had been, I had the pleasure too of working with Nehemiah Collins. But you know, something that I realized, it's like I can't pass this work on, you know, because something that I wanted to do was to, or something I will do is change the world. And I had to realize, you know, God tested me, he tested my heart when he brought Bishop in front of me in this organization as well. Because when you change one person, you know, as little as one seems, you can change the world through that. And that's something that I've been learning with Nehemiah Collins, because of his future, I now helped him to open up his mind and see a better future. And so I couldn't pass that on, you know. All my dreams, you know, and me retire my mom, get my mom a house, you know, they'll still happen. But I had to focus on, you know, opening this young man's horizon. And there's a lot of young men like Nehemiah who are, who are lost, to be honest, in our city, in our community of Norwood. And you know, they do what young, lost men do, or you know, the youth as well, they wander around, you know, trying to see who, where they can fit in at, you know, where they can be at. But with the work of The Call to Action, you know, we help to grab the youth, to get their attention, to get them to realize that they are lost, and there's a direction, there's a future for them. Because there's worth behind every individual. I don't care what anybody says, every individual has worth. And so that's why I couldn't pass up this work, you know. And as I've been working with Nehemiah, he doesn't have this, you know, two-parent, two-parent household, or even like a single, or you know, a single-parent household, he doesn't have any of that. And a lot of people don't have any of that, and that's a problem too. But you know, as long as he has somebody in her life that's showing consistency, structure, and order, is when they can, they can start to grow. And that's what I've been working with too as well. Success ambassadors work with family, communicate with the family, to see what's the problem in a home, because why am I sending Nehemiah back after working with a week, working with him for a week, and he's not showing any results? And so you have to be able to work with the family. And I just want you all to know, as community leaders and advocates, that that's what we should focus on, on our youth, on the families that's raising the youth. Because I don't want to grow up and see the same thing that's happening now, nowadays, to when I'm raising my kids. You know, and the way to fix that is to invest in today, invest in the young man and woman of today as well. And so I just want you all to know that. And that The Call to Action is working with those families, is working with the youth. And so if you're going to support anything, anything positive in today's generation, I encourage you to support The Call to Action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last request to address council is Bishop Sonny James.
Good evening, thank you, Haley. Good evening, everyone. Bishop Sonny James, 4305 Ashland Avenue. Let me, let me first, the Bible says that we're to give honor to whom honors due. I just want to say thank you to my peers. It's more than obvious that we have very competent and capable leaders in Norwood. I also want to thank all of our council members. You know, as we, as we continue to grow as a community, folks, we are faced with all kinds of challenges. But one thing that I brag about with Norwood, sometimes I think about me and the mayor. You know, I tell people all the time, like a family, we might fight, we might fuss, we might disagree, but at the end of the day, can we find something good in somebody else? And so I'm so honored today, again, to have Haley coming before the council, Nehemiah, guys, I can't say enough, but he's just one of many. And I'm sure he wouldn't be upset if I tell you that when I got Nehemiah, I had to pull him out of a trap house, where the young boys thought they ran things. See, these are things that sometimes the police have to partner with community advocates who are anointed and called to this work, like my dear friend Bishop Peterson Domingo, who I think he's the only one that's been on the street longer than me doing this work. I really want to encourage you all. Council member John Moore was at our event on November the 30th. And the reporter for Channel 19 came up to me and said, Bishop, there's not a dry face in this room. When you hear young people thirsting for change, now let me just say to all you Norwoodians watching, this is not the kind of work you just eat Frosted Flakes and wake up and say, hey, I'm going to go out and do it. You've got to be called to this work, because those young folks out there are having real issues that's causing all of the drama. Nehemiah was in a, in a program, and when he, I picked him up and he shared with me the students that are from Norwood in the same program. So we have issues that we need to address as well. Recently, I was called by a parent, and I'm saying this because I'm so proud of Norwood and the growth we've made. Parent called me and she said, Bishop, I don't know who to call, but there's one of our middle school students who told her friends, you won't see me at school tomorrow because it's over. And I didn't know who to call. And she called me, and I gave her my word that I would not stop until we got to this girl and her family. And I was so pleased with Derek Alsip from our Norwood Middle School. They jumped right into action with me. I went to the police department and we were having a major gun issue in our community at that moment, so the police station was nearly empty. But the officer there came and we talked, officer shrunk, ended up going, being on dispatch. Derek Alsip, I called Sarah Allen, I contacted Chris Kelch, I went to the wrestling room where he was. And what I want to say to Norwood is, we may not be perfect, folks, but we're a family. And we're proving, not only just to Norwoodians, but we're, we're proving to cities and other communities that there is a forefront leader in this. And on December the 20th, we will have Come Together 2.0. Guys, if you really, really want to get your feet wet, if you really, really want to get involved in something that can really impact life, we have success ambassadors, we have seasoned skilled mentors that are our success ambassadors. Guys, I encourage you to come out and get involved. December the 20th, mark it on your calendar, and you will see something that I promise you, you've never participated in in your life. And in closing, Connie Pilage had just called me about an hour and a half ago, and she was so excited, our Hamilton County prosecutor, and she says, Bishop, I've got some good news to share. And she and I were almost in tears together with the work, a wonderful report that she gave me. And I'm not the only one out here doing this work, but it's time to come together. And it can't just be Donald Trump meeting with Mom Donnie. If they can meet, what opposites? If they can meet, so can we. God bless you all, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, don't be surprised if I knock on your door for turkey.
Thank you. And moving on to reports of standing committees of council. The first is the Committee of the Whole report dated November 11th, 2025. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred city budget hearing, beg leave to submit the following report. Committee of the Whole met at the request of the Finance Committee to allow, to allow for council to be present, oh, I really messed up that report, for the discussion about the city budget for 2026. Mr. Bonzal, Mr. Miracle, Mr. Powers, and Mr. Zimmerman were also present during the meeting. Mr. Gerton presented charts, graphs, and additional data to review the variances in budget keys and departments. Mr. Powers, Mr. Bonzal, and Mr. Miracle answered questions pertaining to those changes. Additional funding recommendations were requested for items such as Norwood Community Television and Senior Center Lunches, and there are two paragraphs of minutes attached. Respectfully submitted, Joe Gears chairperson, Miss Alexis Royce, Mrs. Susan Hoover, Mr. John Moore, Mr. John Brayden, Mrs. Emily Franzen, and Mr. Jeff Gerton. Mrs. Bowling.
I believe that we received a committee report.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to accept the committee report, Mr. Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Mr. Moore.
Yeah, thank you. For those of you who haven't maybe been following along with these off meetings that aren't sort of this proper city council meeting, just want to say thank you to Mr. Powers, thank you to Mr. Miracle for the work they've done, Mr. Gerton as Finance Committee Chair. To have the 2026 budget as, in as good a shape, where we are more than a month away from the turnover of the calendar, from people I've spoke to in this room, it seems like this is maybe as early and as good of shape as a budget has been in, in recent memory in Norwood. I just want to commend you all for the good work that you've done to, to get us to this point, and how excited I am for what's in that budget and the good work we can do in the city with it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Mr. Moore, is to accept the committee report. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is a Law and Ordnance Committee Report from October 20th.
To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Law, Ordnance, Human Resources, and Compliance, to whom was referred crypto ATM regulation and group home slash sober living regulation, beg leave to submit the following report. The committee heard from the community and discussed a property on Hopkins. It also heard from a community member about his experience with crypto ATMs and discussed a possible ban. Respectfully submitted, Miss Alexis Royce, chairperson, Mrs. Sam Bowling, Mr. Jeff Gerton, and Mrs. Susan Hoover.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
I believe we accept the committee report.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to accept the committee report, Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is a Law, Ordnance, and Human Resource and Compliance Committee Report from November 10th.
This is going to sound very similar, but they were two separate meetings. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Law, Ordnance, Human Resources, and Compliance, to whom was referred the issues of sober living homes and crypto ATMs slash virtual currency kiosks, beg leave to submit the following report. The committee collaborated with Tim Gary to discuss regulation of sober living homes and possibly banning crypto ATMs within city limits and the specific language of the ordinances. Oh, respectfully submitted, Miss Alexis Royce, chairperson, Mrs. Sam Bowling, Mr. Jeff Gerton, and Mrs. Susan Hoover.
Mrs. Bowling.
I believe that we accept the committee report.
Sarah, a second. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is a Finance Committee Report from October the 28th.
To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Finance, Budget Audit and Claims, to whom was referred claims- Budget Audit and Claims, to whom was referred claims, standing reports, and the budget, beg leave to submit the following report. The Finance Committee discussed and approved a claim. The committee heard the monthly report from the Auditor's Office regarding a new inventory tracking software and updates to the Ohio checkbook website, which is visible through the Auditor's page on the city site. The new program management tracking software, Monday.com, will be live as of December. All council members are encouraged to sign up for view access to be able to track the progress on the report, to be able to track the progress on the report on accounting methods for the FRP. The committee also discussed questions to prepare for the budget hearing meeting to be held on November 11th. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Jeff Gerton, Mr. John Braden, Mrs. Emily Franzen, and Mr. John Moore.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we accept the committee report.
And Sarah. Mr. Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is Infrastructure Committee report from November the 19th.
Thank you. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Infrastructure, Streets, Parks, Recreation, and Public Places, to whom was referred Burwood Park Listening Session results, long-term parks plans, and noise reduction by Interstate 71, beg leave to submit the following report. We discussed the results from the Burwood Park Listening Session last weekend. John reported that 20 people attended in person, and additional people took the survey that was left on the porch of all 700 houses within about a third of a mile of the park. Consensus seemed to be that a dog park and natural playscape with native landscaping were the top choices of the residents. Money is budgeted for 2025 and needs to be allocated ASAP. Darren Hackford was consulted, and is in the process of vetting contractors for this project. We also discussed the potential addition of sound barriers around the Burwood Park area. This is something that the state or federal government would need to construct and fund. Concerns were passed on to the Safety Service Director. And finally, future parks plans were also discussed for other parks, and the need for a comprehensive plan was noted. Mrs. Franzen will continue to work with the administration on concrete plans for other parks this year, next year, and in the next five years. Respectfully submitted, Mrs. Emily Franzen, Mrs. Alexis Royce, and Mr. John Moore.
Thank you. Mr. Gerton.
Make a motion to accept the committee report.
Sarah, a second. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to second readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have one, and that is a resolution to adopt and implement a cybersecurity program for the City of Norwood in compliance with Ohio's cybersecurity law and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen.
I move we have the second reading.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to have the second reading of the resolution. Mr. Gerton.
Second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the second reading of the resolution.
A resolution to adopt and implement a cybersecurity program for the City of Norwood in compliance with Ohio's cybersecurity law and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Moving on to introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is a resolution requesting the Planning Commission to adopt backyard paving Ms. Royce.
I move we have the first reading.
Motion by Ms. Royce to hear the first reading of the resolution. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Ms. Royce.
If people were curious, this was actually brought to the Law and Ordnance Committee by Mrs. Franzen, but it was a good idea, so obviously we're moving forward with it. It's basically just, I don't know if people noticed, but there have been some backyards that are entirely paved. In Ward 1 specifically, their rental properties are basically turned into, they were adjoining houses, backyards were basically turned into a parking lot. And there's nothing saying they couldn't do that. So there, yeah, that results in water runoff, obviously, possible flooding for neighbors. Not that we haven't heard anything, but obviously we'd like to prevent it in the future. So we just wanted to make sure something got on the books, and I didn't know if Mrs. Franzen wanted to add anything.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes, so this is something that residents have voiced concerns about in the past with these rental properties basically having their backyards completely paved, and it just seems like something that the city could do to, you know, continue to make sure people can provide parking in the backyard, but also not completely destroy any pervious surface in the backyard. We have so many issues with flooding throughout the city, adding more impervious surfaces is not going to help the issue. So this is a recommendation to the Planning Commission, since we cannot do this ourselves, that they consider adding this to our code to reduce the amount of pervious surfaces that can be in Norwood and just in the backyard.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Ms. Royce, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to have the first reading of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the resolution.
A resolution requesting the Planning Commission to adopt backyard paving limits.
Thank you. The next item is an ordinance regulating the use of virtual currency kiosks, and we did have one request to address council on this matter, and that is James Bonzal.
Hello, council. So this is the first time since I was elected 10 years ago that I've ever signed up to speak at a council public comment section. But I do believe that this ordinance is important enough that I just wanted to lend my voice to it officially, kind of as a citizen, to let you all know kind of what I think. So I want to strongly encourage you all to consider and pass before the end of the year this ordinance to ban virtual currency kiosks. These machines are almost completely used to scam people. Once money is put in these machines, there's usually no way that they're to get that back. I have a friend here in Norwood, and it was talked about, I think, at the last committee meeting, that was scammed out of $10,000 in the, this virtual currency kiosk was the method that the scammers used to have that money transferred. But I think it's important to note that while the loss of funds was significant, the scammers, when they try to get people to put the, you know, to take action, they use very manipulative and traumatizing tactics to do that. For my friend, she was made to believe that her children would be taken from her without them sending the fine for missing a court subpoena, which created an hour, three or four-hour-long experience of her having to go get the money, find somebody to watch her kids, take the money to one of these ATMs. And, I mean, it was just by the, you know, grace of God, some might say that she didn't put more money in because her husband found her. So it's a, the trauma from that, that is not going to go away quickly, and that's going to last for years. You know, some people might say, well, it's a free market, it's free, you know, you should let people have the option to transact, but the fees charged on these machines are exorbitant. And no one who truly wants to buy one of these virtual currencies for investment purposes would choose to use these methods over much cheaper alternatives that are available online. I've also heard it said that, well, Norwood, we're three square miles, there's a lot of other places that would have them, we don't have to, you know, like, just if we don't have them here, then it might hurt our businesses because maybe people would go to a virtual currency kiosk in another community. I truly believe that, one, it's just the right thing to do, so that really shouldn't matter. Two, I think Norwood's leadership here, and it's kind of, you know, it might be funny to say that like in the future, but like, Norwood's leadership here, I think, is going to end up leading to more municipalities banning these in the future. As soon as we have this in hand, I'm personally going to go talk to multiple city council members in Cincinnati to try to get a ban there. I've got contacts at other communities as well, and I know many of you all do, too. And I think for people that are passionate about this, I think we're going to use Norwood's ordinance as a toolkit to try to get action. I also think that, you know, there is some lobbying groups with these virtual currency kiosks, and I think that, you know, potentially Norwood's ordinance might be looked at somewhere in Columbus, and I'm hoping that the action that we take on this might lead to Columbus actually considering taking further action at the state that might actually help our citizens and just the citizens of Ohio. But I do encourage you all to act. I do think this is important. It's not something that, you know, it's not going to pave a street, it's not going to, there's a lot of things it's not going to do, but it is going to help future people that might get scammed. So I just encourage you all to do it. Thanks.
And on to that item, it is an ordinance regulating the use of virtual currency kiosks. Ms. Royce.
I move we have the first reading.
Motion by Ms. Royce to have the first reading of the ordinance. Mr. Gerton.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
I just want to note that St. Paul, Minnesota, just voted to ban these kiosks five days ago, so we could be a part of the initial wave. This is not completely unique to us, obviously. This is a problem that happens everywhere in America and other places.
Thank you. Mr. Gerton.
I've been on this same committee, and so I've been listening to this issue for a while and asking for the people's opinions about it, and Mr. Bonzal, I appreciate your comments. I'm old enough to remember that you used to be able to go into a restaurant, put cash into a machine, pull a lever, and pull out cigarettes. And so that, to me, is what we're doing in this situation, is we're banning that kind of thing. We're not banning the ability to get, you know, to own or to invest in cryptocurrency, if that's what you want to do, but we're limiting, if we pass this, we're limiting very unregulated means of doing something that does have a lot of risk with it. But we're not limiting somebody's ability in Norwood to invest in cryptocurrency in any other form, any other very cheaper form than using these cryptocurrency machines. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Bowling.
Thank you. I would just like to echo that. We've said this every time we've discussed this issue, but I think it's worth repeating. Sophisticated investors are not investing via these ATMs. There are too many other methods that are not charging 19% fees. These serve as a convenience almost exclusively for people who are stealing from other people, and in this case, from members of our community. We are not removing anyone's access to purchasing cryptocurrency, and by and large, most people who are purchasing crypto are not doing it via these ATMs as it stands. I would encourage anyone who has questions to look back at a few of the law and ordinance meetings where we've discussed this really at length. We went really in-depth into the numbers that the FBI and the FTC put out surrounding these scams. And Ohio, in terms of our average income, we are very low in the country, and in terms of how much money has been stolen via these cryptocurrencies in Ohio, we are very high. So we are being targeted disproportionately. There is no state legislation surrounding these at all. It is so unregulated, it's wild. As much as I would love for every single thing that we do to result in us making a ton of money, sometimes the things that we do just stand to protect our citizens, and I think this is a really important piece, and I would like to thank Ms. Royce for bringing this to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Royce.
I'll repeat the numbers. The crime report from the FBI said there were over nine point, just in 2024, $9.3 billion in scam related to cryptocurrency. I mean, and that's money that our citizens aren't getting back. That's the thing. If there was some way that they were forced to refund this, which some states have passed that legislation, but this money's gone. There's no recouping it. We actually, our resident who came to speak at our last law and ordinance committee meeting, our police department actually was very thorough and traced where this money went. It went to a country where we're not getting it back. They traced it to different, it almost felt like a CSI episode, but they listed all the places it had been sent. It was sent to a location where we have no authority to try to get the money back. And that's the case for almost all of these. And out of the 9.3 billion, I can't remember the exact number, but it was a, the majority of it was specifically through ATMs. Some of it was from, I don't want to say traditional scamming, but more investment-related crypto scamming. And not to, I feel like we kind of sound like the slogan when the ACA was being passed. If you like your insurance, you can keep your insurance. If you like your crypto, you can keep your crypto. This does nothing to stop that. You can buy your Bitcoin, whatever you want, online. These machines, frankly, just the money that's lost, and again, never recouped, very much outweighs what our businesses are making on the rental fees they make from having the machines within their structure. And frankly, you get other little kiosks to put there, claw machines, what have you. But, yeah, we're not the only place to do this. I just, there are other options. Minnesota's passed regulations in the last year, and it involved, you can get refunds, and they set a daily transaction limit. The reason we aren't doing stuff like that is because that has to be done at a state level. The only recourse we have was our initial less aggressive form, which was putting up signs or banning them. And I think after hearing from our resident who was scammed, banning them became the clear better option, based on the fact that in a couple hours, someone lost the total amount these businesses make in a year off of having these machines. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
For Ms. Royce, to the chair, if I may. How many of these do we have in Norwood?
Ms. Royce.
I believe it's 10 or 11. I need to double-check with the police department, but that is what I had counted previously, which in three square miles, I think, is more than enough, and I would like it to be
Any further? Mrs. Bowling.
And to put that in perspective, I want to say the New York Times published an article about one specific crypto ATM that in one day scammed eight people out of thousands of dollars each. I think it was $34,000 total in one day. Eight people got scammed at one same old machine in a 24-hour window, and we have 11 machines in Norwood.
Mr. Gerton. Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gerton, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. So I just did the math. Is that 9.3 billion? Question through the chair to Mrs. Royce. Is that the annual figure?
That was just the year, oh, I apologize, sorry, through the president. That was just the 2024 number. I have the crime report link if anyone wants it.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So if you just look at, you know, this is very, you know, elementary, I guess, but if you just look at 9.3 billion dollars, trillion, billion dollars, and you times that by 20,000 residents and divide it by the population of the U.S., 340 million, our share of that 9.3 billion is $547,000. So it's like, there's so, I think that there's probably way more people than we know that gets impacted by that. And you're seeing a lot, like, even just the last couple of months, you're seeing so many more, like, you know, stuff on CNN about this and other things, like, it's just such an important topic. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor by Ms. Royce, seconded by Mr. Gerton, is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance regulating the use of virtual currency kiosks.
Thank you. And moving on to administration reports. Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things to point out. Montgomery Road paving is complete. They're still working on some of the utility adjustments. That's why you still see some cones out there around the different areas. They are working on the permanent markings. They did temporary markings that everybody was talking about. I hope this isn't permanent. It's not. It's temporary markings during the construction. But they're working on that, and they're doing thermoplastic in a lot of areas. So you'll see improvements there. I know it's been dark, you know, since the time change, it's been very dark and been very rainy and makes it hard to see. There are raised pavement reflectors that will be going down in certain areas where the double yellow lines on which are, which will also help at nighttime for a nighttime visual for the lane markings and things like that. So that's an important part of it. Leaf collection, well, first of all, the Parks Department, we had a meeting with Public Works, Parks is, they're winterizing the bathrooms. Of course, our bathrooms are not all heated in the parks. So they winterize the bathrooms, shut off the water drain lines, make sure everything's closed up there. That is pretty much being completed or been completed. So recognize that those bathrooms in the parks aren't going to be working anymore. The leaf collection crew is out. They typically run behind, the day behind your garbage day. Monday's my garbage day. I got home from work last night. I made sure I got my leaves out. When I came home from work, they were gone. I love to see that. I love to see when they disappear and they do a good job cleaning up. So leaf collection continues, but only for a short time longer. I mean, I have one tree that's holding leaves, but a lot of trees have the leaves down. You need to get them out now if you're going to use bulk pickup. If you're not going to use bulk pickup, then you need to put them in paper bags, in the paper leaf bags that you can pick up at Home Depot or Lowe's. And we actually purchased leaf bags, and they're at the Health Department, so you can pick up some leaf bags there. We purchase them with recycling funds, the city does, and then city residents can pick those up at the Health Department. I would like to just real quickly speak kudos to the Health Department for getting that accreditation, because it has been something that has been going on for a very long time. We have a very good Health Department. It's so good that you really don't hear a lot about it, you know? But, and I mean, it goes back to COVID, and when we had our own Health Department here, and they really helped our community and helped our seniors and helped everybody get through it. But it also goes through the daily stuff that our Health Department does. We have a sanitarian that's keeping our restaurants safe for us and working with the restaurant owners to make sure they're up to the standards. We have a nuisance person who's running around, you know? It doesn't seem like we have that many problems, but if you worked in the Health Department, you'd know, we get, they get calls every day about different animals and different things that are being done that are unhealthy and that they go out and take care of. And then we have nurses that are taking care of our elderly and doing a lot of outreach and different things. And just the programs that they're putting on, like I said, you know, it's, it's almost like when something runs pretty well, you don't really worry about it. When your car's running really well, you really don't think about it. But then when it starts breaking down, the Health Department is like that. We don't think much about it, but they, those people do a great job for our community and continue to do that, and we're lucky to have them. The other part is, I want to talk about our Facebook page. Our Facebook page, City of Norwood, Ohio, has a Facebook page, and we also have the website, so people should be going to the website if you have questions about what's going on with the city. I looked at our Facebook page, and it's got information from the Superintendent of Public Works, talking about leaf collection. And I'd ask that you talk to your neighbors, if they're wondering what's going on, put them towards our social media stuff, and they'll get a good understanding of it. And then clearly, every council member should be talking, because you guys really like to talk and make sure that people understand what's going on in the community at council meetings. But if nobody watches a council meeting, then that's, it's not working. So tell people about Norwood Community Television. They have all the council meetings. You can go back and go through council meetings from months ago. They have all the committee meetings. If you say, they talked about a law and ordinance committee, but I don't know nothing about it. Go to the Norwood Community Television page. Go to their, they've got a Facebook page where you can go to their page and watch all of these. All of these are on. We just talked about, I think it was talked about in the budget meeting, that the City of Norwood pays Norwood Community Television to televise, just like they're doing right now, to provide all that. And they provide all that information so that people can see that at any time. You can go to a law and ordinance meeting by watching it. And, and you can speed through some of the stuff where somebody's talking, and you're like, okay, whatever, I've heard enough, and you can meet. But, but there's good information online, and I hope that people will grab it and look at it and pay attention to it. Because if you're, if you're saying, I don't really know what's going on in the city, there's a lot of ways to communicate. There's a lot of ways to get that information. And then the last thing I'll do is promote the Norwood High School Musical that's coming up. It's Freaky Friday. It's going to be a really good musical. It's December 5th, 6th, and 7th. December 5th is a Friday. It's at 7:00 p.m. at the Norwood Middle School, the big auditorium. Saturday, December 6th at 7:00 p.m. And then Sunday is a matinee on December 7th at 2:00 p.m. at the Norwood Middle School Auditorium. I know the kids have been working hard on it. They've got some good people working with them. Hopefully, some of you have seen the flyers for it. But that's, that's one big event that's coming up that I would hope that the City of Norwood would support and let them kids show off, because they're pretty, some of them are pretty darn talented. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Snyder? Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few points with regard to leaf collection. You said that's going to end soon. Is there sort of a last date that you're readily aware of for when that'll stop?
Yeah, I think normally they try to end it by December, by December 1st. I think in years past, they've extended it back to like December 15th.
Okay.
And then after that, it's a, it's a call-in type thing to the, to January 1st. But clearly, by the end of the year, they'll have all that stuff put away. So you want to get them, most of the leaves are down. There are some trees, oak trees, the pine oaks, and they hold on to them. A tree in front of my house is holding on to them, I raked in the yards, but yes.
Got it. And then with regard to the musical, do they, how do they do ticketing? Is it just box office, like walk-up, or is there an online?
You can go online and get tickets ahead of it, or you can, or you can, walk-ups are welcome also, yes.
Thank you.
Should be a lot of fun for kids, if you have any kids, Mr. Moore.
I wasn't going to call you out of order yet.
Okay, thank you. December 5th, 6th, and 7th.
Any other questions for Mayor Snyder? I do have one regarding the NCT. Is it possible, since we have everyone visiting the city Facebook page, that we could provide, someone could post a link out to either the NCT YouTube channel or the NCT Facebook page to kind of help guide residents who are jumping onto the Norwood Facebook page?
I'm sure we can do that, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Mr. President. The topic I was going to talk about today is the adult-use cannabis, specifically the House Community Fund, where we are supposed to be getting 36% of the 10% XX tax that's levied on adult-use cannabis purchases in the city. So as you all know, there's two dispensaries that are licensed to do adult-use cannabis in the City of Norwood. I think there's like 130 or 150 or something in the state, might be a little more than that at this point. So, you know, basically, you know, two out of 150, so it's a pretty good number. The, the, right now, in the, this House has passed a version of legislation, it's called Senate Bill 56, that would appropriate funds so that we can finally start getting some of the money coming in. I think it's like $49 million for this year, and then $47 million for the year after that across the state, so we would have a share of that. I don't have any totals or anything yet. Another positive about the, what was passed, that it looks like it is the 36% keeps it versus pushing it down to 20%, which is what the General Assembly tried to do, or tried to do, has done, but it might change it back to 36%. It's, it's quite uncertain, but long story short, it's a lot of positives. We're going to keep on it, we're going to keep looking at it, and, you know, at a future council meeting, we'll make sure that we provide updates to you. Yeah, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bonzal? All right. Mr. Miracle?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed in the Finance Committee prior to this meeting next week, in early December, we're going to be rolling out the monday.com, which is a project management tool that we're going to be using throughout the city. The first thing that we're going to have on there is the 34 Report on Accounting Methods, and all the council members will have viewing rights to that, so anytime you want to look at that and see where we are in the process with those. Also, next week, we are meeting with SSI VIP. We have some, they've given us some complimentary hours free. If it's free, it's for me, so we're going to be using those next week. We're going to be working on the workflow. That is a step in our process to go paperless. As you know, a lot of paperwork in the auditor's office, and I think this will be more efficient for us, so really excited about that. And also, we're going to be discussing the VIP analytics, which we're going to be utilizing that for our budget moving forward. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miracle? All right. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to mention, the group homes issue was discussed, it was mentioned in a couple of the committee reports. The one in particular that has caused the to-do, the sober house on Williams, there was a hearing at the, they were cited for having more, more than four unrelated people living there. Basically, under the code, in a residential district, if you have a house, one kitchen, you have four unrelated people can occupy that, that house or that apartment. There are narrow exceptions for group homes, which is what our code says. The state code has changed, and now it's residential facilities. But those are very particular ones where they are providing personal care services for people. And under state law, those are permitted use wherever you are. If you are not, like, literally physically taking care of people that have intellectual disability or things like that, it's, you're stuck under the, our code is four, no more than four unrelated people in a house or building or apartment. And they were cited for that, and the BZA upheld that citation. They still have some time to file an appeal to court on that, but that's where our code is on those. The hard, the interesting, the difficult part, as far as enforcing any of that, and the same is true, true for college houses, where a landlord may try to pile eight, 10 kids into a, into a house, is knowing about them. And so if there's a problem with an issue on your street, or down the block from you, or behind you, and you think, there's got to be 10 people living in there, it's, call somebody. Call your council member if you don't want to be, you know, put your name on, on something. Call a council member, and they can forward it on. Call the Law Department, call the mayor's office, call, you know, the Building Department. But that's the way our code is written, and that's, that's where we, that's where it is right now, as far as, that's where our code is, as far as the, like, sober house with 10 people living in there, who are just living in a house. That's not something that's allowed under our code as it is now. So that's just an update on that issue and where we stand on that particular problem.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moore? All right. Then we will move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So previously, I have mentioned the aspiration to create a collaborative committee with two members of Norwood City Council and two members of Norwood City Schools, just to provide periodic touch base on what they're working on, what we're working on, how we can collaborate better, things like that. The, on the school board side, they did vote recently to confirm the creation of like a collaborative committee. I guess any sort of subgroup of that they need to vote to do, which is to signal that they're interested in sort of participating in this and reciprocating in it. After the year turns over, they'll have to sort of officially appoint whoever their two delegates are going to be. But I just wanted to share that that is happening on, on their side. My understanding is that Julie Kemphaus, the current treasurer, is winding down her term, and they're transitioning to the new treasurer, which is to say that I think the hope from their side, and frankly, for me personally, would be to have the first of these meetings before the end of this calendar year, just to have an initial touch base, you know, what, what could this be, flesh it out a little bit more. And so I bring that up in the spirit of, from our side, trying to figure out who we would like to have participating in those. I know that a number of people in this room have been in different meetings with the school board this year. Certainly, I would have energy for being one of the two on this body to participate in that meeting, but just wanted to bring that back up and see if there's additional thoughts or questions about that collaborative approach.
Mrs. Franzen?
Would it be appropriate to maybe, we can figure that out in Committee of the Whole in this coming next, or two weeks from now, or next week?
Next week.
Yes, thank you. That might be a good way to have an open discussion about who might be doing that.
Sure. Mr. Gerson, may I place that into Committee of the Whole?
I'm, I'm already, I've already added it. The school slash city collaborative.
Correct.
All right.
And?
Mr. Moore?
If I may, while we're on the topic of the December 2nd Committee of the Whole, back in late August, there was a group of Xavier students that attended this meeting through their poli sci program. Their class project in that class is to actually come and address council about topics they've been researching or studying throughout the course of the semester. The finals week for Xavier is December 8th and beyond, and because of the varied nature of when people leave and things like that, I'd like to invite that, that group of Xavier students to the December 2nd Committee of the Whole to offer their comments sort of as part of their class project, and therefore place that into Committee of the Whole. They have a wide range of things, from housing to substance abuse prevention to ADA compliance, that they have, I think, two or three-minute remarks prepared. So I'd like to ask to put that on the agenda for that December 2nd meeting.
All right. So I have that as XU student class comment slash project. That works?
Sure.
All right. Any other unfinished? Mrs. Hoover?
Yes, I wanted to share that I got an email from Greg Landsman's office regarding the Doral Field Grant that we had applied for and got, and then things shifted and elections happened. So this is, I was just going to read straight from the email. They are, sorry, I'm going to start right here. The continuing resolution that was signed into law to reopen the government runs through January 30th of 2026. Between now and then, the House and Senate are trying to get full-year government funding appropriations bill ready for passage and signed into law, bills which could include the funding for your project. However, as we've previously seen, there's no guarantee those full-year government funding appropriations bill for the community project funding will pass. Instead, we could re-enter another government shutdown or pass another continuing resolution that does not include the community project funding. It's hard to predict what will happen right now, but when we know something, we will share it, and their office will continue pushing for the funding for our project. So all to say, it's still up in the air. It's not a no, but it's far from a yes. But wanted folks to just know where we were in the process.
Thank you. Additional? Mrs. Hoover?
A couple other quick things. I just wanted to share that last week had a really cool couple of events in Norwood that we had talked about, and then many of us were at the Norwood Pumpkin Chuck, which was much fun and raised funds and food for Ashland Church. At the same time, the Norwood Police Association was doing their fill a truck, or fill their cruiser. And just as I was stopping by, it was lovely to see Mr. Powers was dropping off food. I saw, I just saw so many residents, I think I saw another council member there. It was just really lovely seeing the community come together and fill the, and fill the cruiser full of food. And that is all I have under unfinished. Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other unfinished business? Moving on to new business. Mrs. Franzen?
Hi. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone who came out to the Pumpkin Chuck event, raised over $500 for Ashland. Is, I, that's the last figure I had. I was only tangentially involved, but my husband and several, several of our friends made the trebuchet, and it worked, and no one was hurt, except for the pumpkins, which is always nice. I also want to, I was also able to be a part of, Iron Sharpen's Iron had an event where they filled, what was it, 1,800? A large number of boxes with the Thanksgiving fixings that a lot of families need this year, so I was able to help out with them for about an hour. They had a great operation. Cyrus also helped by putting the gravy packets on the ground, which was great. Yeah, and I also want to call out a couple of events that are coming up. December 6th, there is a Norwood Craftmas Town at the Norwood Community Center. That runs from 10 to 3:00. It's a craft fair put on by the Norwood Rec, and I believe that some portion of the vendor fees will go toward the Norwood Giving Tree. And there is also a Pancakes with Santa this Saturday with our very own Santa. I won't tell you who he actually is, but I hear that he's a pretty good Santa. So Pancakes with Santa, that is at the Rec Department at, from 8:00 to 9:30 this Saturday.
Mr. Gerton?
I was asked to bring up another Christmas-themed event. This one is sponsored by the Great Church of God, and it's December 13th at Lower Millcrest Park at noon, December 13th, Lower Millcrest Park at noon. 13th, Lower Millcrest Park at noon. And it's Cookies with Santa, Christmas music, a Christmas story, and cookie decorating fixings and, and fun.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowlin?
On the topic of Thanksgiving meals and folks who may need a little assistance getting a beautiful Thanksgiving meal on their dinner table this year, Good Plates Eatery in Clifton, which is not too far away, is again doing their free Thanksgiving meals to anyone who shows up to ask for them. They open tomorrow at 11:00. Please do not go without a lovely meal this holiday. They will give you a beautiful home-cooked meal, no questions asked, until they run out.
Any other new business? Mrs. Hoover?
Just a couple. I'm really excited. The Board of Health is here. I've been working a lot with Carolyn, who's the nurse there for recycling and sustainability initiatives. And you can take your old holiday lights there to the E-Bin, which is the big metal bin behind the Board of Health, to be recycled. You also go to one of the greater Hamilton County parks. But how cool is it? You can just swing right through. That's a great way to get that stuff out of landfills. And also, for local businesses, they should be receiving or have already received information on how to start recycling. How we found that a lot of our local businesses do not recycle. So we're trying to start breaking down those barriers. Also, need to schedule a meeting, a housing meeting. I believe most folks have already confirmed. Mr. Braden, would you be able to attend a housing meeting Tuesday, December the 2nd at 5:15?
Sure.
Like to schedule that. And just for clarity, we will be having a portion of the Xavier students who have items to discuss about housing speak at that portion of the meeting. And then we'll have a break. And then we will have the Committee of the Whole. And then two other points. We've had some conversations recently about concerns around drug use in Norwood and the concern about the sober living and the chemical dependency. And I spoke with Commander Davenport. He is the, he's the head of the Hamilton County Heroin Coalition Task Force. If folks remember, Ron Murphy, he, former Assistant Chief of Police is now, he now works for that department, for that program. And they have a very strong relationship with Chief Sumner. And so they're in contact about, they're going to be pulling some data to see if there are concerns of hotspots in Norwood. There was a resident who made a comment about concerns about these sort of homes popping up. And so what we're going to do is just sort of take a look and see, are we having an issue with, is it a housing issue? Is it a, is it a, a street issue? So we'll get a little more information over the next few weeks. Also wanted to share, we had a small meeting with some folks who are connected with the homeless community. I know folks have talked about an increase of people experiencing homelessness at our parks, specifically Victory Park. And especially now that the weather is about to be turning colder, this is a great time for us to be doing some outreach to try to see about these folks getting into supportive housing. So there's a gentleman that we work with, with the Homeless Coalition, who's going to start making relationships and making connections with some of the people in our parks to see if they are interested in programming. I was very happy that Officer Harrison was able to come to that meeting. And one of the things that really struck me was the fact that he knows the names of almost all the folks that, that he's working with. So that was showing me the deep relationship that our officers have. And one of the biggest challenges that, that we're having right now is that there, there is a lack of interest in going somewhere else. And so what do we want to do with that? So there's going to be a lot of conversations, but, but those are happening. And if you're interested in being a part of it, please reach out. I'd love to chat with you. And I believe that is all I have. Thank you, sir.
Any other new business? Okay. Moving on to communications. The first is a letter from Mr. Miracle regarding EOM report. Mrs. Franzen?
I'll make a motion that we receive and file the letter as if read.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to receive and file the letter as if read. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Roy?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. And then last item is the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding Mitchell Salon and Day Spa, Hyde Park, which is really in Norwood, but we won't go there.
Not part.
Mrs. Franzen?
I, I'll make a motion to receive and file this letter as if read. Kind of a weird one.
With, with no objections?
With no objections. My apologies. Yes. I knew I was forgetting something. Thank you.
Is there a second? Mr. Garten?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Garten. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
I'm curious. Not exactly tongue-in-cheek, but I know that Mitchell Salon and Day Spa, that's where I go to get my hair cut. I love them. I've gone there forever. But it always makes me sad that they say that they're in Hyde Park. And they are not in Hyde Park. They are in Norwood. And I remember I brought this up to Mr. Bonzal years ago, and I believe your response was, as long as they're paying taxes, we don't care. I'm curious if there could be a, a friendly way we could say, hey, we would love for you to embrace your Norwoodian-ness from an administrative position. Just my thought.
Aside from the welcome to Norwood signs that are posted at every Rookwood entrance and exit?
It seems like they missed that.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I did just want to make a response to the previous council member. It's not that we don't care, but just the major benefits. If it, you know, whatever branding it takes for us to get our tax dollars, like, you know, we definitely want them. But it is interesting, though, that, I will just say that the, many of the newer businesses that have opened have definitely more embraced the Norwood branding than the ones that have been open for years that just have always said Hyde Park. I mean, even, you know, EST Pediatrics, which is where I sent my kid, which I, they call them, they call it the Hyde Park location. Their main location's in Milford, so maybe they just don't know. But they do. But they, I've told them. But anyways, they say it, they say it constantly. And anytime I can make an appointment, they're always like, the Hyde Park location, the Norwood location, please. So, yeah, I appreciate that, Jeff. And our council member, but yeah, I don't know, I agree. Like, maybe, I don't know. It'd be nice if they could. I think that it just does encourage, as newer businesses come in, like, you don't see it quite as often as you used to. They either use the Rookwood branding or, or the Norwood, which I personally agree with you. I like to.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mr. Garten, is to receive and file the communication as if read with no objection. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Garten?
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Is there a second? Mr. Moore?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.